All right, I am calling this meeting of the -- this is our regular meeting, our February Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:39. Can't hear me?
It sounds weird.
It sounds weird. It could be our new -- it's all our new system. We do have Raul on the line, calling in. So, we have a really full agenda. I'm actually worried about how full our agenda is. So, just to review quickly, we'll go through our standard things at the beginning, including an ED report. We do have, under Chair Business, our first of our department chair presentation. So, our Science Department is here.
Did you?
And we're very happy to welcome you. So, we put them right at the top of the agenda. Then, we'll discuss some of the task forces, the Strategic Planning Task Force, as well as the Family and Faculty Survey Task Force. We do have an officer election to go through. I'll talk about that. We have board SMART goals to discuss and then -- oh, sorry, that was all under Governance. That was Governance Committee. Updates from Ed Committee, Finance and Audit Committee, as well as Development Committee. And we will be going into executive session tonight to discuss litigation strategies and to consider the purchase and lease of real property, as well as discuss strategies for collective bargaining, because doing so in open session would be detrimental to our position. I also want to make a note that this meeting is being videotaped, and we do have one person, Raul, is participating remotely because he's in Philadelphia due to geographic distance. That's what it was.
And you won't be convening, reconvening?
We will not be reconvening after open session. Uh-oh, Raul's texting me saying, "Did the phone stop working?" Does that mean he cannot hear me?
Is it always sunny in Philadelphia?
Okay. Oh, he says it dropped. Just give his numbers.
This Bible, eh?
Yeah. Just the number. Okay. I want him to know that Sarah's calling him back. Before we get started, I did have a request from one of the board members that we take a moment of silence in -- for the shooting that happened yesterday, and that we want to send our thoughts to our colleagues at the school in Parkland. So, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that and to recognize that horrible tragedy. So, if we could take a moment of silence just for that. Thank you. I also have other sad news which I am -- which the board knows, but I do want to read what I shared with our board, which is that Tom Taverna has stepped down from the board. He has resigned. You may know that he recently started a new job at State Street Bank as Senior Vice President and Senior Compliance Officer, and so he is working in Boston and traveling a fair amount still. He feels that he is no longer in a position to provide the trustee role what the school deserves, and he does wish the school and the administration the very best. So, I do want to read a little bit of what I sent around to the board, because I personally have volunteered with Tom since 2012, and I would like to take some time to explain how absolutely instrumental he has been to the school in this period of time. His impact has largely been behind the scenes and is therefore grossly under-recognized. So, over the years, in addition to his roles as Finance and Audit Chair of the Board and Treasurer of the School, Tom has been on the Facilities Task Force since the very beginning, since 2012. He has worked on a number of complaint investigations, including a really complicated one that he and I worked on at the very beginning, which actually required untangling 46 different complaints. It took about a year. He was part of the first collective bargaining task force. He has been part of the Executive Committee for the last four years during a time when there has been significant turnover in leadership, not just the ED, but other senior people, and there have been multiple lawsuits from former employees. So, this has required a number of difficult decisions on severance settlement, just much more behind the scenes besides what it has been public. And I do want to indicate that despite his gruff exterior, Tom was regularly more generous and compassionate than I was in all of these small group meetings. And I think this is a part of him that was invisible to most people, and so I just want to acknowledge that publicly. We are only in the solid financial situation we are in now because of Tom's efforts over the past six years. At my very first Finance Committee, I learned that the school had cash reserves of less than four months, and the state was paying tuition quarterly, which meant that actually -- this is six years ago -- the school was regularly in danger of not making payroll because the state would be delayed in its payments once in a while. So, literally, when Tom joined the Board, the finances were such that the Board was actively concerned about keeping the doors open, and large expenses were actually being paid late to make sure that this would happen, that the school could continue to make payroll for all of its employees. And in spite of this, Tom actually was very careful to never be critical in public, so I'm absolutely certain that no one understands what -- how precarious the financial situation was that he inherited when he joined. So, it is only because of him that we are in the situation that we are. He has spent countless hours outside of Board meetings and Finance Committee meetings working with various business managers to improve the financial systems and processes. He has worked with former EDs to institute a budget process that promoted transparency and accountability, as it did not previously exist, and he always made himself available when he could, given his extensive business travel. He was traveling two or three weeks of the month. So, I know other Board meetings have -- Board members have meetings on weekends, too, but I just wanted to give you an idea that literally I met him once at the school at 7:30 a.m. on a Saturday when he was driving home from Logan because he needed to stop by the school to sign checks, after taking a red-eye right from the West Coast. So, while I completely -- oh, one final thing. Tom also ensured that he did not leave the school in a lurch despite personal sacrifices. He has waited until Lucy was here and brought up to speed over the past year and a half, and has complete confidence that Lucy will take over seamlessly. And indeed, I mean, in the past week, it is very clear that Lucy is prepared to ensure a very smooth transition and has already begun the process of just jumping right in in terms of taking over that piece of it. So, while I completely understand and respect Tom's decision to resign at this time, I actually am personally disappointed about this. That is actually the word I used in my email. I will greatly miss his counsel. I mean, he is actually someone I talked to a lot for AMSA Board Business. And again, I do feel that it is pretty much single-handedly because of Tom that the school is not just financially stable, but viable for the long term. So, I wanted to read that out to everyone because we all owe him a tremendous debt of gratitude.
You're here.
You're here.
All right. So, can we -- because of his resignation, we do have an empty officer position. So, can we move that nomination up? Can we do that now?
I'd be glad to do it now.
Okay.
During the Governance Meeting, we met and discussed and would like -- Governance Committee would like to nominate Lucy Corante to be the Treasurer of the Board.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Because we do have someone participating remotely, we have to take a roll call vote. So, we'll go around and do this.
Aye.
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 Oh, do I vote?
No.
Aye.
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 Raul?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Lucy, congratulations. Thank you for stepping up to be our nominee. Also, as a result of this, Jean Pettenelli is stepping down as Co-Chair of Ed Committee, and I am nominating Jean to be part of the Finance and Audit Committee as well. So, thank you, Jean, for stepping up. So, we have a little bit of depth in our Finance Committee. Yeah. All right. Now, we can get on to our regular business. So, first order of business, let's review the minutes from both the January Board Meeting as well as the Strategic Planning Offsite. Because Raul is our secretary now, we have these -- these were -- I mean, these were submitted like 24 hours in advance. We all had time to read these, so. Take a look at those.
As of that point, Roger Jarrett was not a member of the Development Committee.
Oh, okay. Yep. That's on which one?
He was an interested party.
Chris, what did you say?
Roger was not a member of the Development Committee in January.
Which, Jan-Bot meeting or?
Jan-Bot meeting.
The Bot meeting. Okay. Under the Development Update. Are there any other corrections?
Just under the Ed Committee Monthly Update, the two words, "learning" and "approach" are smashed together in the fourth sentence, so that just needs to be fixed.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on the January Board Meeting minutes? If not, I will take a motion to approve those with those two corrections.
Motion to approve.
Okay, please. And second?
Roger.
Roger, second. We need a roll call vote. So, Jean?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. And then, we'll do the Strategic Planning Offsite minutes as well. These could be -- should be pretty good because we have pictures. So.
There's a minor typo, I think, just to the font on page five of six in the finalized SMART goals area.
Where, Raul?
Below where it says, "Move toward competitive salaries," there's "increased revenue overlaps with received," and the "move towards competitive salaries" also overlaps.
That's the same thing that Lucy noticed. I wonder if that's a weird thing.
I think it's when the --
The italics.
The corrections that I think were all made in there.
Uh-huh. Oh, okay. Let those fix us.
How is the wording right now?
Well, the wording is correct.
No, the wording is right, but the printout, when, you know, with the italics, with the italics is smushed together.
I think the increase in font size overlapped the next words.
Yeah. I think we can just fix that in there. That should be easy fix.
Content is correct.
Content's fine. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Liz.
Second.
Ev, second. All in favor? Oh, we got to do this by roll call vote again?
I abstained. I wasn't there.
Oh, okay. That's great.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes?
Yes.
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 Raul?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. We have no public comment, so we'll move on to Ms. Murphy's update.
Thank you, Sam. Good. A little bit longer, just feel like the past month has been a little bit more busy than we had pre -- for the previous meeting. So, we're now at the halfway -- or past the halfway point of the academic year. The normal rush of the end of Term Two was a little different this year compared to past years because the school decided to reevaluate midterms in favor of having an increased weight on the final exam at the end of the year. Teachers were still allowed to administer some kind of mid-year exam, but it just kind of worked a little differently in our grade books. And the idea was based on feedback that a lot of AMSA alumni have provided about how when they get to college, they feel that their -- the weight of final exams isn't something they're really prepared for compared to what they experience here. So, I think that change was definitely positive in that, but it led to just a little different schedule, kind of a smoother schedule around the midterm point, because it's always been something that has been scheduled a little differently, and actually administering exams and whatnot can be a little difficult. So, just it made the middle of the year feel a little different than usual. On January 26th, which was right after our last meeting, teachers, counselors, and students participated in Wellness Day, which was focused on stress management and healthy decision-making. The day was organized by the school counseling department, and they should absolutely be commended for the work that they -- that went into organizing all the logistics of the day. They planned, you know, everything down for every single student to participate in, and they had a rotation of activities that included zumba, yoga, board games, and tangles or trivia. And they also presented -- or the students also attended a presentation on healthy decision-making by Chris Sullivan, who is a former Patriots player, and Kathy Sullivan, who lost her daughter in an instance of destructive decision-making several years ago. And students were really receptive of this message, and several teachers were impressed with the tone of the presentation as well. And we're also very thankful that the school is finally providing these opportunities for students so that they can learn the importance of, you know, making safe decisions, making, you know, the right decisions in a lot of senses as well. The one concern that a lot of teachers shared was that a lot of 11th and 12th graders were absent that day. For it was a half-day, so it seemed to be some kind of attitude of, you know, it was a day they could miss essentially. So, therefore, they didn't receive this message, and arguably, they're the ones who need that message the most because they're the oldest. But the, I guess, student government is discussing how to have a follow-up to the presentation so that all students can continue to have these tough conversations, even if they missed out on that particular day. On the same day, the teachers had a half-day of professional development, and these half-days have been planned by the PD Avengers who caught -- or, sorry, the Fantastic Three. Messed up my name. Who constantly seek the feedback, or feedback on what opportunities teachers would like to see, which can be -- it seems like it's probably difficult for them just because there's so many different experience levels amongst the faculty in terms of their backgrounds and their needs for professional development. So, they -- the day was broken into three sessions. There was one presentation that all teachers attended that was on stress and anxiety in adolescents, and then there was a rotation of mostly teacher-led lessons in their areas of interest. So, Dr. Lewis had one on the atomic bomb. Lower school teachers had the opportunity to go to a session on classroom management strategies to help respond to some challenges that have been recently discovered and presented themselves in the lower school. There were several other options as well. And then, the final hour was to continue the Wellness Day theme for teachers as well, and there was some kind of more active option, like yoga, floor hockey, or taking a walk around the campus. The feedback on the day overall is mostly, or overall, pretty split. Some really appreciated the chance to choose sessions and participate in some kind of activity with their colleagues, and others desire more concrete workshops on instructional topics, like anything from teaching students with different learning styles to special ed strategies, you know, anything like reading comprehension or teaching ELLs as well. And again, the Fantastic Three is always soliciting feedback on the PD opportunities that teachers would like to see. And we have our next PD day as a school in March. It's a full day, and that is when departments will be engaged in department-focused PD for an entire day, and would -- teachers seem to be looking forward to this opportunity. Many teachers have also been engaged in the strategic planning process recently, as you all know. So, in the fall, areas of need were identified and voted upon the faculty and -- by the faculty and staff, and different committees were formed to address these needs, and the first of these was the Whole Child Committee. This committee recently submitted a document to Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay of its summary and proposals for integrating more whole-child-focused approaches into our existing curriculum. The next committee is in the process, or is in the process, in Protocol Committee, and each department recently heard from its chair soliciting volunteers to take part on the committee. And with so many changes over the years, there is a need has arisen to really get a lot of these processes and protocols in place, just because things get lost in translation and in the shuffle of people moving in different positions or leaving the school. So, this need will -- it will be good to address this need in the coming weeks through the work of that committee. And then, lastly, tomorrow, a group of 14 teachers and staff will be meeting with Cheryl Lauer to engage in the next part of the strategic planning process of identifying the core values at our school. Participants were asked to interview at least two of their faculty and staff members so that many different people's input will be incorporated, and all of these opportunities to provide feedback, share ideas, and participate in the decision-making process here at the school are tremendously empowering for teachers. It is clear that administration wants to hear from teachers, making their voices feel valued. And I can say personally, over the course of my own six years here at AMSA, I've never had the same feeling, and I know a lot of others have been commenting on the same, that it's nice to have our voices asked for and to be listened to as well. And lastly, with contract negotiations underway, there's still that same sense of waiting amongst the faculty. There's, you know, definitely the sense of, to see if the administration can deliver on one of the best ways to retain faculty, which is increasing compensation. However, some teachers noted that this isn't the answer to retaining faculty completely, or the complete answer, I should say. Rather, it's important to remember that maintaining teacher autonomy, which is such a hallmark of working and in teaching at AMSA, should remain a top priority of the administration no matter the level of salaries. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Jill, Parents' Update.
I did not receive any specific concerns or complaints since our last meeting from any parents, but I thought I'd give a few highlights from the last family forum last week, I think it was February 6th. One of the concerns or issues that had come up was the emerging problem of vaping in the school, and both Principal Lindsay and Dr. Lewis were really good about reassuring the parents that they were on it and that it's not tolerated in the school, and the parents seemed to be reassured by their reaction and also to encourage the kids, the parents to talk to the kids about it. It is a new problem, or new-ish problem, so everyone's starting to tackle it all at the same time. So, that was one issue that came up. And then, obviously, with respect to the building, there was a generalized ugh response from the parents when there was really no update. But Dr. Lewis, again, emphasized the fact that there are many people working on the issue, and generally, the parents still have faith in the administration and the Board to resolve that. Another question that came up, which actually is sort of a recurring question because I had heard it before, but it's regarding the difference between platforms that different teachers use, whether it's Google Classroom or Plus Portals. And Ms. Lindsay actually recognized that this is a problem still, and, you know, despite their efforts and resolution of a lot of issues that have come up since the beginning of the year, this is one that's still out there, and it's difficult, but they're working on it. They're going to get it. They're going to get it. And sort of a related question that came out of that, someone had a parent had asked if we could do a parent survey that was specific to teachers and coaches, but I think that stemmed more from the fact that there are teachers that may not post on the Plus Portals as often or as frequently as they would like. So, that's sort of turned into a conversation about Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay working really hard on improving what they call proactive communication with the parents, and that's a very important goal, which I'm sure Dr. Lewis will talk about in his report. And it was a good family forum, and like I said, nothing specific has come to me from any parents since the last meeting, so just a general update.
Great. It's always good. Does anyone have any questions for Jill? All right. And let's move on to our ED report.
All right. Thanks, Jill, and Brianna, and hello to everybody. I have my timer. I set my timer 15 minutes and go. Okay. So, we have our winter break coming up. Everyone is looking forward to a little rest and relaxation, very well deserved. Just a quick thing before the updates today, we had our American Mathematics Competition Test, the AMC, a tradition here since 2005, so we're proud of that tradition. I know the math department is very proud of it. We're particularly proud of 25 mathletes in the lower school who qualified to take AMC 10 in the upper school, and we're optimistic that several of the students who took the test today will qualify, as they've done in the past, for the American Invitational Mathematics Examination, and hopefully may go on to participate in the U.S. Junior Math Olympiad, Viva la math! I would probably fail both tests, so. So, a couple updates, three major updates. So, the first update on the family forum and community council. So, we had our last forum, which Jill mentioned, on the 6th, a very helpful forum, lots of good feedback. The next family forum is on March 6th. That's a morning one. And our next community council meeting will be February 28th. We're eliciting suggestions for that one for feedback. Both the forum and the council are really, really important to Ms. Lindsay and I to just -- we need that feedback, constant feedback, constant loop of information to see what's working, what's not working, how we could do better. It's absolutely vital and essential. So, as Jill mentioned, lots of topics came up, strategic planning, the DSCIF visit report, which will talk about enrollment and the growing problem of vaping in and out of AMSA. And I think for Ms. Lindsay and I, the one concern that we heard a lot was how we can improve our communication with our families, which is a concern that has been discussed before. And the particular two areas of concern were the difficulty of finding assignments, be it if a teacher is using Plus Portals or Google Classroom, and then just the level of consistency, which Ms. Murphy mentioned, about when grades are posted. So, we take those concerns very seriously, and we're very committed to solving them, and we are very committed to working very closely with our teachers, our department chairs, to develop much clearer policies and procedures around that. We're calling, you know, we can come up with a fancy name to it, Family Communication Protocol, Protocol of Best Practices for Communicating with Parents. The way we envision it is something that will add a little bit more specificity to our existing observation form. So, the existing form that we use with everybody states that teachers engage in regular and cordial communication with families, including the posting of grades and assignments to Plus Portals, academic warnings, and email communication. So, somewhat clear, but could have a little bit more specificity to that. So, the goal is to have a community-wide conversation with our teachers and our department chairs and kind of develop a common, shared understanding around several questions and really a set of best teacher practices. What are the best AMSA teacher practices for things like posting of grades? How often should grades be updated? What's most helpful to parents? What's most helpful to students? And what's manageable for teachers? A lot of teachers have lots and lots of students, so what is most manageable for teachers? Then, posting assignments is another really important question. When should assignments be posted? How long in advance of the due date? Does that vary depending upon the age of the student or the subject of the class? Another really important question that we want to -- Another really important question that we want to create a greater sense of shared understanding is email communication with parents, and just general communication with parents, too. When is it advisable to email a parent? What are academic concerns that could merit a direct communication? What are behavioral and social concerns that might merit a direct communication? And then, when is it advisable to have a face-to-face meeting with a parent? At what point would you say that? And how can a teacher best manage communication when they have over 100 students, or perhaps over 200 students? So in addition to developing that protocol with our teachers and our department chairs, we're looking to work with our fantastic three PD Avengers to create some professional development around best communication practices and a clearer set of guidelines for where assignments are posted, particularly for middle school kids and our middle school parents. And we are very optimistic, in fact, we stated at the forum, that they can hang my hat if we can't make good progress by the fall. I have no doubt that we will, that we will come together and we'll definitely make good progress on this. It is, certainly it is a tough issue, it's not an easy issue to solve, but we are going to make progress, and I'm looking forward to doing that. Second update, really quick, because it's been mentioned, strategic planning. This was a big week for the process. On Tuesday, the parent focus group met, and tomorrow's a big day, student focus group will be meeting in the afternoon, and the teacher-staff focus group will meet in the morning. So the purpose of that is to help all of us clearly define our goals, not to rewrite the charter or rewrite the mission, but to give life and meaning to that mission, to create our bumper sticker, so to speak. And the third update, the big update, this will take a bit of time, and I'm going to skip a little bit of this so I can stay within my time limit. So perhaps most of you have seen the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's site visit report from December 7th, which just came out a few weeks ago. I'm gonna just go over that. So you can skip page 5 and most of page 6, that's just informational. If you'd like to read it night, you're having problems sleeping, you can read that. So just to provide some context for understanding the site visit report, so in June 2015, AMSA's charter was renewed, but there were several conditions placed upon their charter, our charter. In their April, so there was an April visit and a December visit, in their April visit, DEES listed what those conditions are, what the outstanding conditions are, and what progress we have made. So the three conditions that were listed in the April report, the first one is that the BOT has to submit monthly board materials to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The second one was for the BOT to create an evaluation system for the executive director. And the third one was for school leadership to create an evaluation system for school leadership. So in April, in April 2017, DEES reported our status for each of those three conditions. One, they said is ongoing. Two was met with concerns. Three was met with concerns. Fast forward to December, DEES reported that our status for those three conditions were, one, ongoing, so that's the one ongoing condition. Two is now met. Three is now met. Yay, so progress there. So in regard to condition two, the Board of Trustees has created an evaluation process. It includes goal setting, mid-year progress report, and an end-of-year summative evaluation. And DEES also noted that BOT will be using the input of our teachers to evaluate the ED me as well. And then in regard to condition three, DEES reported that AMSA administration has created a new evaluation system for school leaders that includes goal setting, various check-in points, and a final summative evaluation in the spring as well. So progress on the conditions. And then, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also noted, we're happy to say, some progress on some particular categories that they were focused on. So in the December 2017 DEES site visit report, they noted improvement in the category of access and equity. In their April 2017 report, the Department of DEES stated that we only partially met state requirements for ensuring access and equity. And they stated that because AMSA has not enrolled EL students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students at a level comparable to sending districts. DEES also noted concerns with delays in AMSA's submission of recruitment and retention plan. So as a result of those concerns, DEES gave AMSA a condition yellow, which means we only partially meet, or partially met, state requirements. So fast forward, December 2017, DEES upgraded our conditions from yellow to green, and they noted that though we still do not quite enroll population that is comparable, they noted improvements in several areas. One was consistently emphasizing the goal of AMSA's defined in our charter that we're a school for all students, regardless of background, regardless of ability. They noted the amazing work of Mr. Finkel, hired on the previous executive director who's just done a great job communicating the goals of our school, hiring the new special education director, Maureen Lebel, who's doing a great job promoting EL special education program in our promotional materials, advertising and promoting the school in low-income areas, and with the help of the BOT, providing programs to assist economically disadvantaged students. So great progress there, looking forward to more. Second important category is school leadership. In their April 2017 report, DEES expressed concern with the constant leadership changes at AMSA and the lack of overall stability. And as a result of that, in their April report, DEES gave us a rating of yellow. Happy to say that that has been upgraded to green, so they noted several improvements in the area of greater and effective communication, focus on AMSA's mission, clearer administrative roles, more open decision-making process, and increased morale. So we're very happy about that. Looking forward to more progress. And then last but not least, another important category that DEES focused on was support for diverse learners. In April 2017, DEES expressed concern with the state of AMSA's special education and EL programming. They noted concerns with staff turnover, IEPs that were not consistently followed, inconsistent identification and support processes for EL students, and as a result of that, we received a yellow rating. Fast forward, December 2017, our rating is still yellow. So we were a little disappointed, but fortunately, DEES did note several areas of improvement, so I think you could say it's yellow turning to green, and it will be green the next time, no doubt. So they did note areas of improvement, significant improvement in EL identification and support procedures, the hiring of Ms. Lebel, formation of the Special Education Task Force, prioritizing of the inclusive nature of AMSA. Ms. Lindsay and I really grateful for the improvements in our EL and special education programs, and we thank the entire staff for making this progress possible. And we're looking forward to using this report to continue to make progress, to turn those final lights, that one final light from yellow to green. The DEES recommended that we conduct self-evaluation of both our EL and special education programs. We're looking forward to doing that. They also recommended creating a clear tiered approach to student support needs, a provision of, a clearer continuum of services, so we're looking forward to doing that as well. Last but not least, what are our next steps? It's been about a year since we began in these positions. We are very pleased with the progress, and our overall goal is the creation of an AMSA that truly embodies the great ideas of our charter. And to do this, over the course of the remainder of this academic year and into the next academic year, we've committed to two big steps. These are two big steps. So step number one is to take nothing for granted. Take nothing for granted. So we are heartened by the increased level of trust, and we believe that that feeling of trust that is beginning to permeate the school and an environment, I think Ms. Murphy mentioned this, an environment where people feel, teachers feel free to innovate, to create, and to explore, is absolutely essential to problem-solving and innovation, and is the essence of what an educational environment can and should be. And we're very happy to see that progress, but we know that trust is very fragile, and it's dependent, you know, I can sit here and talk to him blue in my face about the importance of trust, it doesn't really mean anything. What matters is day-to-day interactions and clear, open, and honest communication and problem-solving. So we've made progress, and we're particularly interested in making more progress in the coming year. So that's the first step. The second step is to continue to improve and to view each day, each and every day as day one. We want to continue to build trust and spirit, and we want to move AMSA forward to encounter the many new challenges and opportunities that we have before us. And we have a lot of challenges before our school, there is no doubt about that. So I've provided a list there of really key challenges that AMSA faces over the next year, two years, three years. The one is finding the best possible location of our school, very important challenge. Another important challenge is a charter. Our charter is going to be up for a five-year renewal. We want our charter to be renewed with no conditions and nothing but green and blue lights. We want to be the model for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Another key challenge is continuing to build that trust and morale. Another key challenge is to improve the comparatively low salaries of our staff so that we can retain and grow our teachers and counselors. Taking strong steps towards greater salary equity is absolutely essential, and moving towards it, as Ms. Murphy stated, will enable us to attract and to keep the best teachers, confront the changing needs of our students, and further build trust. The way I like to think of this is, what we really need collectively as a school is an argument for why someone would want to work here. Why do you want to stay here? And why, how can we attract good teachers here? And I think there are three important parts to that. One is just the unique design of our school, which is a fantastic design, the set of high expectations that we have for our kids, are wonderful kids. It's great to be in an environment where there are high expectations. Two, I think, also important is that the intellectual freedom that Ms. Murphy mentioned, that sense that you can experience, experiment, that you can make mistakes, that you can teach out of the box, you can try this, and if it doesn't work, well, just try something else. And then another important part of that argument needs to be that at AMSA, we will have stronger salaries and a stronger benefit package for our teachers, so that teachers will want to stay at AMSA, and good teachers will want to come to AMSA. Very important. So another really important challenge is meeting the opportunity presented by the demographic patterns, the changing demographic patterns of our school. In 2005, 81 or 80% of our students were outside our core towns. And this year...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. So it's essentially almost flipped on its head. So overwhelmingly, most of our students are from our core towns, and well over half of our students are from Marlborough. And we welcome this heartily, we embrace it, because it truly is, this shift is our opportunity to be who we said we would be. We said in our charter, we say in our charter, that we're a school dedicated to serve students in need, with a strong education from Clinton and Hudson and Maynard and Marlborough and other towns, a school committed to the belief that all children can excel in all subjects, and a school whose name means that we know that all kids can learn at an advanced level. So now we have the opportunity to do what we said we would do, and that's a great opportunity. And we're committed to doing that. We're committed to high expectations, that's who we are, we will never give in to the soft bigotry of low expectations. And we're committed to successfully meeting all the challenges that we face. It will not be easy, we have lots of challenges, many of the ones that I listed in front of us, and all of us are going to be tested over the course of the next month and over the next year. We will all need a little bit of patience and a little bit of humility. We will need faith that though we may disagree, and sometimes we may disagree heartily, that we all do share a common goal. And we will need to know as well that the struggle is not going to be easy, it's going to be hard, but the goal is decidedly worth the effort. And if you will forgive me for another historical reference here, whenever I think of tough struggles and how things might be difficult, I like to think of President Kennedy's moon speech, which he gave in 1962, when he wanted to explain why he wanted America to be the first nation to put a man on the moon. He said, "We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Because that goal will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills, because that challenge is one that we're willing to accept, one we are unwilling to postpone, and one which we intend to win and others, too." So 2018, let us challenge ourselves to continue to come together, continue to improve, and continue to build up this wonderful school of ours. Thank you, and go Eagles! Go AMSA!
Are there any questions for Dr. Lewis?
A comment. First, congratulations to you and to the school and to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for recognizing the importance, not just of the numbers in the chart, but your, Dr. Lewis, your repeated emphasis on we will serve all children, we will help all children to excel. I think that it's very hard to overstate the importance of your continually beating that drum. And if our numbers are going to come to more closely resemble the numbers in the core towns, we're going to have to have that reputation. And your continuous emphasis of this is helping us to be a hospitable environment for these kids, but also to get the reputation of a place that really takes it seriously. So that can't be overestimated, and that will predict the eventual bending of the numbers curve.
Right.
Good for you. Good for us. Go Eagles!
Okay, so let's move on to the chair business, and first...
Yeah, I think I could.
Okay.
I can start that update. So the, before the last board meeting, the family and faculty teams met and started through the combining of the two surveys. There was, we developed with the family one, there's one group worked on the family survey, one group of three worked on the faculty survey, and we were looking for common threads and cross pollination between questions that we wanted to ask in both. And the process continues, and we're on track to have a survey done by early March. And Mike Glass has been working with our survey company, I'm drawing a blank on...
Panorama.
Panorama, so that they will be, the plan is that Panorama will administer the survey using our content.
That's great.
And we are on track for that delivery.
So you'll be ready for it when we want to, whenever?
Brianna or others, did you want to add more?
No, that seems like a good update. Yeah, I mean, we're just kind of finalizing everything for the survey from last time, so...
Thank you, it's a lot of work. I mean, that's six people who've met multiple times, wanted to get this right finally.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this, I think.
I know, I'm excited to see the output. It's just one of those things that we've complained about for six years, so it's nice to just finally get one that we all actually like to use.
Do any of the committees want to give their updates, if they're quick?
I can, if you want me to.
Sure.
Unfortunately, mine starts out with thanking Dr. Jurey for his presentation, so...
Let's hold on that part.
Yeah, we'll skip over that, no. But I do want to thank you, you are our first department chair presentation of 2018, and the Ed Committee started talking about this last fall, so I'm glad that we're finally here and getting started, hopefully, fingers crossed. And we look forward to hearing from you and the other department chairs. So in March, actually, we'll hear from Alex Waldron from the English Department. In April, we'll hear from Lubas Schmidt from the Math Department. In May, Sarah Preston from Language and Arts. And finally, in June, it's a little bit of a wild card, but Dr. Lewis will be presenting on history, so. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Lindsay for coordinating all of this for the Ed Committee, we appreciate it. At our February Education Committee meeting, we worked towards finalizing the committee's strategic dashboard that we will use to report out to the board. I received some great feedback after last week's meeting and have sent out an updated version for review by the committee. version for review by the committee. I hope to have it finalized at our next meeting so that we can work on populating it between now and the end of June for the board meeting. Also, we are narrowing down the dates and logistics for our proposed trustee day in March. Right now, March 20th is the date that most trustees can attend, but we still have to hear back from half of the trustees through the doodle poll and you know who you are if you have not responded to me. Depending on how long the trustees have during the day, during the school day, between 8:00 and 3:00 p.m., we will determine how many classes they'll be able to observe. For planning purposes, the trustees should plan on 30 minutes per class. And Ms. Lindsay and I are meeting on Thursday, March 1st to finalize the logistics for the day. So, if you have not already done so, please respond to the doodle poll ASAP so that we're able to finalize the date. Just so everybody is aware, right now, March 20th is the leading date, so the most people can attend on March 20th, so. But feel free, if you have not already done so, to respond to the doodle poll. Thanks, that's it for the Ed Committee.
Liz, and where, it's meant to be for the entire day, right?
It's up to each of you. If you can give an hour, you'll have the opportunity probably to see two classes. If you have longer, then you can possibly sit in on more classes. And I believe you told me we have 13 teachers who have volunteered for, oh, sorry, you told me 13 teachers have volunteered for observation, so we have a good number, so.
Great.
And we'll work through, that's one of the things that we'll go into the final logistics planning at the beginning of March. Okay, great, thank you.
We're good, yeah?
Great. Here we go.
Already?
Already.
Yeah, this would be kind of embarrassing if I said that you're a science department. All right, so, I want to give you an overview of the department that the numbers, the graphs, the charts are just not going to give. So, if you're hoping for a lot of graphs and numbers, you're going to be disappointed and I'm sorry about that. But, I hope you can understand where we're coming from after the presentation. So, we start out by using some guiding principles. We have three. The first one is to do what's best for the student. And since, you know, me personally and some of my other colleagues here are dealing with hazardous materials, the first thing we've got to be cognizant of is student's mental health. If someone's having a bad day, I really don't want to do something risky. And we also have to look at our students. Sometimes life gets in the way and they're not always performing optimally and we may have to shift our plans. So, student mental health is the very first thing we look at in everything we do and every lesson we plan. We also are continuously trying to redefine student self-worth. Far too often, our students today are a number, a letter, or rank. And that, that's just not healthy. It leads to so many other things that, too many anxieties, that's what I'm going to say. We want to instill love of learning for students and we want to prepare students for life after school, whether it's AMSA into real life or into college. Second guiding principle I would have here is failure is an integral part of learning. We need to make an environment that's safe for students to make mistakes. We have to encourage risk-taking and creativity. Growth will come from struggle, mistakes, and challenges. The third one is, and it's one of the hardest ones for us to do, is to have all of our instruction be experience-based. It's not really advantageous to have a sage on the stage telling people about science. Science is something we need to do. You need to get your hands dirty, but you need to be coding, you need to be building, you need to be titrating like this young lady is right there. And we need to gauge students with applications of knowledge and skill. Knowledge is not enough in this field. We want to build understanding and confidence through real-world applications. Now, there aren't a lot of people that are going to be titrating like this girl is, but knowing an equilibrium that you learn through hands-on experience is extremely valuable. So, in honor of Dr. Lewis, we're going to go back in time to 2005. It's hard to appreciate where we are if we didn't, if we don't understand first where we came from. So, I am the second-longest employee here. I came just after Dr. Lewis. When we first got here, I was one of the three part-time teachers and we had two full-time teachers in the Science and Computer Science Department. We didn't have, we had rooms. We had tables, mismatched chairs, no lab equipment whatsoever. We didn't even have computers. We were doing CS unplugged for three months. And quite frankly, we didn't realize how much we still had to do. We just thought if we got computers, we'd be okay. We got some lab tables, we'd be okay. And we worked and we grew. So, today, we have 19 full-time science teachers. We are operating 38 different courses with multiple sections in our levels. We have three fully functioning science labs. We have six computer science labs. And we have eight science classrooms with minimal capability. On the left-hand side there, that's our science classroom. They're not labs, but we do our best. So, our current offerings here, this is from our eighth-grade parent. So, we do Java, Web, and CAD in ninth grade and we advance it in 10th grade, too. You've got Web, CAD, and advanced Java, also our AP Computer Science. We really start to differentiate and increase the level of rigor in our 11th and 12th grades where we're picking up cybersecurity, intro robotics, data science, which is a hybrid Oracle class, going to be Big Data soon. We have two co-taught classes with other departments. One's a discrete math and computer science class. And we have a new digital media class that we are co-teaching with art. So, in science, traditional offerings, biochemistics. So, ninth grade is biology, 10th grade is physics, or excuse me, 10th grade is chemistry, 11th grade is physics. Then we have AP Bio, AP Chem, AP Physics. So, we really start to differentiate again here in our 11th and 12th grades where we are getting our electives, we're rotating them in and out. Core electives that we're running, environmental sustainability and our research program. And that is what really sets us completely apart. Now, our research program wasn't answered to a former executive director who wanted me to go around and map where STEM was in AMSA. That was not something I was going to engage in, I'm sorry. I said, "If you want me to do that, I'll create you a research program and if somebody questions whether or not we have STEM, have them come in and take a look at it and there will be no questions after that." So, our research program is exactly modeled after grad school research programs. Students come into the program like grad students would. They have to learn about their project, they have to research their project, they have to acquire the skills necessary to gather the evidence and analyze the evidence, they have to put forth a hypothesis, and then they got to do a set of experiments to engage that hypothesis. All while doing that 45 minutes every day, or in some cases, every other day. So, we pick them up in 10th grade and hopefully we keep them through 12th grade. So, currently, the four areas we have are molecular biology, geochemistry, we have wildlife management, for lack of a better title, and then engineering. So, in our molecular biology, we really are trying to give kids a task or a project that you cannot look up, there is no answer, no one on the planet has done this before, period. So, our flagship molecular biology, we're working with a cancer gene. It's called Prominin-1 or CD133. It's widely, widely known in a whole host of types of cancers. We are working on it and we're trying to, not working, we're working on the gene, not working on a cancer. We are trying to attach a glowing fluorescent protein to this gene to make it a multi-step process to be able to identify this protein when it's in your body. Now, we're not doing any body studies here, we're just doing little test tube stuff. But, no one's doing this. This is a completely novel experiment that Mr. Ben Giovanni has developed. And it's got an enormous lifespan for this research because currently, the gene we're looking at, no one can quite figure it out because we haven't crystallized it yet. No one has, or at least not at right now. And without that, we don't know what the structure is. Without that, we can't build an antibody to make this system complete. So, we have a lot of work to do if we're going to get to that point, but this whole research program is about the process, getting the kids engaged, having them go through the motions. Like in this program, they're going to use various techniques, transformation, plasma design, nucleotide design, electrophoresis, page. But it literally is the plasma design and nucleotide design that we force them to do that schools don't do, colleges seldom do, grad schools do. And we're using the same programs, whether it's AD gene or SNAP gene, whatever out of my program we got now, to model these proteins, the sequence together. And then we purchased said sequence from partners like Sigma Aldrich. We get it in and we insert it into our plasma into the cell. So, there's still a lot of complex stuff going on there. So, if we shift over now to geochemistry, those students have only a small task. They're tasked with mapping the heavy metal contamination in the Asperger using X-ray fluorescence spectrophotometry. That's a machine we have and we're going to utilize to a hopefully good extent. And we're going to map all contamination, heavy metal contamination that's in the Asperger. So, it requires students to go out, take samples, properly prepare the samples, then analyze said samples with wet chem techniques, then through our spectro photonic. Then we have to actually go out and send our samples up to have a third party verify our results before we can even start to present. Next slide. So, wildlife management, that's a really interesting one, but has shown the most results. Their goal was to do like an ecological survey of this little spit of land right behind us in between 495 and in between that massive development right down there. So, it's not many acres, yet we have evidence that we have coyotes, we have river otters, we have deer. We don't have anything like moose or anything that'd be cool. But, there's an enormous amount of wildlife in that one little area. I was very surprised. I mean, it's landlocked by massive, massive human structures and yet, life goes on. So, that's interesting. Our engineering research is one of, I think, our most promising ones, where we have students engaged in all parts of the design. And now that we have 3D printing capability, last year, one of our students decided that he was going to take on golf club design and test these new golf clubs that he was going to print. And we did. It was an epic failure. But, it led to three more designs and he was able to hit that ball further and further and further with each design. This guy absolutely loves golf, wants to go to school for golf, and he just got so much out of it. So, we're expanding that program and we're going to tie it in with our AMSA racing team. And yes, we do AMSA racing team, which is currently populated with far, far, far more girls than there are boys now. So, through our research, we've been able to bring in some companies like Millicore Sigma, General Electric to speak to our students. We've also had Google, the Deputy Director of the NSA, and Microsoft Security, as well as Thermo Fisher, that came and speak to our cybersecurity class about security concerns in industry. And those connections have led to internships, which we have had over the years. The majority of them here have been the last one to two years, where US Medical Harvard, Thermo Fisher, is thanks to our good friend Michael Glass. And I heard he was going to increase the number of interns this year, so, you know, congratulations to him with that. That's awesome. Morpho Trust actually comes to our school, hopefully again this year they will too. They are a security company. They come in, they interview our students, and they handpick the students to intern. So, we had about 20 to 30, would you say?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five from last year that went and did internships. Hopefully, we'll get the same amount again next year, if not, or this year if not more. But, it's not just those programs which inspire students to lead or take advantage. We have had our students initiate programs and it's really been inspiring where we have had students initiate the CS Smart Program, where they would go out to areas like town halls and museums of science and Microsoft stores. And what they would do is they would put on little demonstrations to get kids excited to learn more about computer science. And they would do this on Saturdays and on holidays. They would go out and they would just engage kids. We also send, every single year, when other schools are doing the Hour of Code, we send our students to go do that for them. We don't bring the Hour of Code here, that's all we do is code. We send our students out to other schools to help them and get those students excited. And I know Mr. Noble brings kids to Marlboro that will initiate the Hour of Code there. We've had some students decide that our neighbors there, Schmack, were underserved and they decided to develop the science program and they were going over there and running science programs for those kids. They're young kids, too, so it was pretty impressive. We also empower our faculty. So, years back, a couple of my faculty members came to me and said, "Could we start a Computer Science Teacher Association chapter for Massachusetts?" And I said, "Sure, I'll support it." Well, they did. They created that chapter, they started bringing in the teachers, and we had it here for numerous years, they started bringing in teachers all around Massachusetts. They brought in Google, they brought in Microsoft, they brought in all these other industry leaders. Actually, MIT felt bad and they wanted to join too. That's how we actually got the App Inventor. We were the first school to actually run the App Inventor. In fact, it was so unusual at that time that two of my teachers went to a college and taught other teachers how to initiate the App Inventor program in their school. We're also extremely instrumental in developing the Digital Literacy Computer Science Standards for the state of Massachusetts, as well as creating the CS license, which is the objective for that. We've had our students present at National Geological Science Society conferences. We've had students attempt publication, I don't know if it even got published, but attempted publication in a molecular biology paper. A high school student took some of our research and wanted to submit it for publication, which is huge. We had one student that said, "I've got $5,000, I want to have this idea, I'm going to go get a patent, what do you think?" And we said, "We can help you do it and you can just pay the filing fees." And the student did. He actually got a preliminary patent issued on his idea for a kinetic binder. And one of the, last but not least here, the one thing that I'm most proud of is through AMSA Unique Activities, which is CS Gems, CS Jets, Museum of Science, AMSA Racing, and a plethora... a plethora of other after-school clubs and activities. We have more girls than boys in every single of my advanced classes in the Science and Computer Science Department. They outnumber the men two to one in some cases. I have always had more girls than boys in AP Chem, every year. And they're seeking it out. We encourage all to take advantage of it, and for whatever reason, the females feel very empowered and very supported, and they're doing fantastic at it. So that, that's awesome. So what are we currently working towards? Right now, my main goal is to get the lecture out of class. We have more hands-on activities, more lab activities that promote content and application. We need to increase our focus on essential skills, curiosity, imagination, critical thinking, problem-solving, adaptability, and accessing and analyzing data. We're trying to make some integrated courses like Meteorology that's coupled with a Big Data class and something like that, that's to come. So the Science Department of tomorrow, like I said, increased lab-based instruction. This is limited by space. For us to do more, I have to have prep rooms, we have to have more space for stuff. We are stuffed people. That's just what we are. We want to expand our research program to access more students in more areas of discipline. With that, we want to shift the focus from the test-driven curriculum, which is AP, to our in-house science programs. The theory and thought behind that is, it'd be hard for us to find a high school that does not have AP Chem, AP Bio, or AP Physics. There is not another high school in this nation that has research, period. And if we want to differentiate our kids, we don't do away with AP, we increase research because that's the unique identifier. And I'll tell you what, when you hear those students talk about their research, it is inspiring, it really is. It's not a science fair, these kids did everything on their own, right here under our supervision. They failed, they failed a lot, but they keep going. So, back to this. One of the main, main things for computer science, we have to update our computer science labs. They're Q-classroom-like, we want to create a collaborative inspirational space. We have reached out to Google to help with design and funding, it'd be awesome. But more importantly, to service our students, we have to continue to evolve the CS curriculum to meet the challenges of tomorrow. And that means me sending my CS teachers to all the conferences. We are running courses here that colleges do not have. Cybersecurity came out of Ms. Vandaro and Mr. Alvarez going to CIC. They've partnered with Boston University and Stanford to bring us our cybersecurity. We are trying to bring in a Big Data class, but there's nothing out there. No school is doing it. They're looking at doing it, and we are going to launch it next year. And it may not be as encompassing as possible, but we are trying to lead the way, get those kids excited about those areas. Big Data is going to be a huge field. It's not going away, let's embrace it. Cybersecurity, come on, we've almost all been hacked right now with it, period. So, that's, that's something that's happening. So, what do we need? I was told to give and ask. So, the first one, I believe we're looking at that according to Dr. Lewis's statement on the facility search is ongoing. So yes, we would like more space. We want to increase our course offerings and resources. Resources, that would be the humankind. So, we are currently running our teachers at full capacity. There are 20, without me included, we're at 24.5 hours a teacher, and I have 19 teachers. So, if I want to add a course, I have to take a course to leave. I can't run alone. With more space, it's going to require equipment investment, not the five, $10,000 thing right in the budget, but outfitting a lab is pricey, so that's important. One thing that I don't think has ever come up, is back in 2007, when we did our graduation requirements, the iPhone came out. I'm on the iPhone X right now, and we still have the same graduation requirements. Do they fit the current student need? I don't know. I know from science, I would like more science. I have heard through the grapevine that Dr. Lewis wants a citizenship. I've heard through the grapevine that Louis Schmidt would like another geometry requirement. But if we put so many requirements in, something's got to get him. So I think a bigger entity should look at all those requirements and not just incrementally add until we don't have any more classical requirements. So please, pick up that mantle in a committee. And last but not least, we need to determine another way to define and measure success in AMSA. Numbers are a way. But if we're talking about the whole child and student health, I don't think numbers are getting at what we need. There are other institutions like Hampshire College and various charter schools that measure success differently. Hampshire College doesn't have grades. How do those students graduate and get jobs without grades? If grades are so important, that's my question. I don't know the answer. If I did, I'd be presenting you the answer. So, lastly, coming up is our third annual science, April 3rd. Mark your calendars, all are welcome. We've got about 30 students, it's going to be on the third floor here, it's a Tuesday night.
Second floor.
Second floor Computer Science Labs too. It'll be, hopefully the presentations will work then. We will have cybersecurity presentations, we will have geoscience, molecular biology, it's going to be a good time, engage the students, ask good questions, tell friends, tell family, bring everybody. We can hold over a thousand people in the school. With that, thank you very much for having me, it was a pleasure.
We have questions for Dr. Dre, it looks like we do, yeah.
First off, let me say, Dr. Dre, I think this was excellent. I think, especially for being the first one, I think this was a great kickoff. I really applaud you and the whole Science Department, especially with your guiding principles. And I really like having the, a couple of the bullets up there that one talked about, as a student, failing is part of the journey, it's part of the learning process, along with the one that referenced, and you just sort of spoke to it a little bit here, redefining student worth or net worth. And you're more than just a number or a rank, so I think that's excellent. We had a development committee with Dr. Lewis the other day, and one of the things, listening to this presentation, which just really sort of resonated with me, I knew what, I forget Mr. Vidal's correct title, Community Development Manager, whatever there, but one of the things he talked about was meeting with various companies and promoting AMSA and not having the brochure, the package to sort of sell AMSA. And so that's one of the goals that I think is on a list, and that's in process. But certainly looking at what you presented here, to me, makes me think that this ought to be a part of that. And that, what a great way to sort of promote AMSA students by some of the work that the Science Department is currently doing right now. So I certainly think that this ought to be some element of that somehow included.
Make sure Mike Finkel has your slides. Mike, you got that?
I'll send it to you. I agree. We, yeah, I got to thank Ms. Vandaro for her tireless efforts and her tenacity to just consistently ask for, what can you do for our students? There's not been an after-school club where she has not said yes to. And that coupled with all the industry contacts that we meet in these areas, you know, these conferences, the conferences are key for us.
Sure.
The PDs that teachers go to are great, don't get me wrong, but conferences for science in particular for CS have to be attended because we meet people like BU, Hoffs, and more importantly, Stanford. And they're like, "Well, what can we do?" And we just say, "Well, how about internships? How about this? How about that?" And they'll, "Well, we can't do that, but we can do this." It was enormous that Mr. Glass was able to get internships for science students. Up till now, the majority have been computer science because scientists don't want to take that risk. So, that, that's awesome that he's been able to foster that. Now I can point to, because we tried with GE, and they said, "Oh, you know, they're not 18." I said, "Well, his student's over 18," and they said, "Yeah."
Right, I remember some of those conversations from last year.
Yeah, you could not get them to do it.
Now you're telling them Thermo does it.
Right, Thermo does it.
They make a mean MRI machine.
Yeah, that's right. The other thing I think about too, whether it's this year or some future year, but the science fair that is going to take place on April 3rd, what another great opportunity from--
That would be a science night.
Oh, science night, okay.
Yeah, the science fair is a completely different thing.
Okay. Well, that, that concept of it, to me--
We have kind of been to do it.
Okay. So terminology here is key, that's what I'm picking up on, okay? So I also think that may be an opportunity, whether it's this upcoming one or one in the future, to not just invite friends and family, but also from a perspective standpoint of employers, internships. From a foundations, fundraising standpoint, as we're looking to try to get more and more companies to invest in AMSA, what a great way to see what AMSA does relative to our Science Department.
Absolutely. We usually have local colleges, MIT, Harvard usually show up. We've had local companies we've invited. I know Millicore Sigma will be in attendance, GE maybe.
So maybe we market it or push it, I guess is really sort of what I'm alluding to.
Not that we have a communications department. That's exactly what we should be doing.
So, just some thoughts.
Everything he said. This is just superb. Another thing that Science Night could be used for is first of all, making sure everybody understands the distinction between Science Night and Science Fair, which I'm not sure I do, but we can borrow off on, is that for, when we start courting significant individual donors, this is a perfect thing to bring a donor to.
Correct, exactly.
Your slides are great. And I have to say one thing, but I don't remember what it was, so just probably.
Thank you. I do want to say that this is not me speaking. I'm the presenter, the staff has, we're tirelessly to put together this so that I could speak cogently out here.
I remember what it was. And that's, we talk about here about replication as a core part of the mission of a charter school. And we've struggled with that in the last couple of years since I've been here. And we get some occasionally kind of dry, you know, so-and-so went to a couple of meetings. And this is really powerful, original, stretching the limits around the concept of what replication of this kind of education.
Dissemination. Dissemination, you're thinking, not replication.
Dissemination, sorry.
We could. We can make another AMSA two or AMSA whatever, but you've got to understand--
Which is what you're doing is dissemination.
Yeah, but you guys have to understand, curriculum isn't anything, it's a piece of paper. Without these guys, we have nothing. They're the thing that holds the standard, the inspiration, and everything that makes AMSA great. And I've been here long enough, I've seen, I've hired every single person from my staff. We hire for team, we hire for what we want AMSA to be. Some people make it, some people don't. But it's their tireless effort which inspires the kids, which gets them into the good schools and makes us look good. But the number is just that piece, it's all the lifting up of the students when they have that bad day. Because the number comes from a test on a day at the end of an entire year. But it's how they struggled through that year which is really inspirational for these kids. So put that in mind if you don't have any more questions.
I just had one comment. From the parent perspective, it might be a nice idea to have that slide show up on the website. I think that would be enlightening for the parents to see--
I have another version that's a lot more wordy, so you can get the feel of it without, you can read the slides pretty much where it is.
I think that'd be great for the parents.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
Thank you, Dr. Dre, and all the science teachers, that was awesome.
Okay, Raul's dropping off. Oh, shortly. Oh, I thought you just did, okay. Super. Let's see, we are at a, let's do governance update. And then we've got finance and development.
Okay, we met Tuesday for governance, we had a very productive session, we've already done the officer election, so we discussed that. The second thing, we discussed a total of three things at governance. First was officer election, second was the mid-year ED review feedback, and third was the converting the, the goals into SMART goals from the January strategic meeting. So for the ED mid-year review, Dr. Lewis provided an excellent summary of what he had accomplished. He, in my opinion, and I think sort of speaking for the committee as a whole, he has almost completed the yearly goals already. He's on track to complete all of them. There was minor discussion regarding one of the goals, regarding what is our goal for AP, that's a topic for next year, but he's, he's well on track, and that was very well received. And we will, as a supplement to the governance meeting minutes, we will put Dr. Lewis's review feedback in the, in the governance meeting minutes, so look for that there if you have questions. Just wanted to defer to the other governance committee members if you want to say more about that portion of the meeting.
No yellow lights.
All green.
All green.
Actually, blue, right?
Blue.
Yeah.
So our, our next, our, our major task, our second, our second significant task we did is that we took the ideas or goals that we set out from the strategic meeting, and we turned them into draft SMART goals. And so, in your packet, we have the draft version, if you want to take a moment to, to read it.
Okay, now these were posted two days ago, so actually, everyone has plenty of time to read these.
Yes. And I'll thank Raul for doing an excellent job in both getting them posted as well as helping to lead that, that portion of the meeting's discussion. And so I think that probably the best thing to do would be to go by group and start with facilities and work our way down, and just do flag and discuss on each group and then proceed onward. So I'd like to start with the facilities goals, SMART goals.
Yeah, any questions?
Any questions?
This was the easy one.
They get, they get, we took, we sort of went from easy to hard. So, hearing no discussion, we'll move on to communication. Our overall thought and communication was, well, in particular, one of the focuses that we had was the challenge of making and having an understanding from all of our stakeholders of exactly what the role of the board is. We are not a school board, we are not a nonprofit board, we are some hybrid there-- We are some hybrid thereof.
Oh, the word deblurring didn't end up in here.
Victory is mine.
We've de-litificated.
He's just going to make up words.
No, no, it might be a word. So, so we really, in the communication, we wanted to really focus in reaching out to all of our stakeholders through various media to help clarify our roles and communicate the goals and the goals of the board and our processes and how we do, how we work. Liz, I believe you had feedback on-
I do. So on the last two goals around conducting at least one BOT roundtable meeting with teachers and with parents, right now, the date there is December 15th, 2018. I would just like to challenge us to do this by June. We've not had a roundtable meeting this year. I know things have been going pretty well, but I don't want us to rest too long on our laurels. So I would like us to challenge ourselves to do it by June of 2018 instead of December.
Yeah, I would totally second that. I think, again, just for the purposes of building trust and transparency and all that, I think it's important that another one get in during the school year.
Could I suggest that we increase the goal to two board table round meetings, the first one by June and the second by December?
I think that's fine. I mean, I know in the past, we've tried to do them quarterly. So I would say that, given that we're already halfway through the year, we're already two behind if we were to have rolled them out quarterly. So I think at least if we were to get two in by December would be better than we are right now.
All right. And Priyana, your thoughts, same on the teachers as well?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
To June, to June slash December? Other questions or comments, feedback on the communications block? Refinement and clarification of mission and values. As we've talked about in other parts of the meeting, we're well on track toward that already, but we wanted to put a SMART goal attached to the strategic plan.
Any, I see the December 15th date. Any thought about moving that up to, thinking about the start of the school year?
Oh, he's talking about the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's part, that's part, that's the second bullet.
Yeah, the second bullet.
We-
So instead of having the December 15th date for the consensus about the statement of guiding principles, do we think we can do it, say, by September? Was that your thought?
That's right.
Yeah.
Start of the school year.
I think it'd be, I think it would be a stretch, from our discussion, I think it'd be a stretch goal. Because we've worked on and off over many years to try to get here, and I'd rather nail it down solid in December. But I think if we put an interim, maybe we add a second-
Bullet.
An interim goal so we can get there to say, you know, in, say, a goal by September, produce-
A draft statement of guiding principles.
Yeah, a draft statement. But revise sort of a round one, a round one in September and a final by December.
I mean, we have a draft already. But we need the draft with the input from the strategic planning-
Yeah, so we could, so we could, a revised-
A revised draft.
Revised draft incorporating the strategic planning feedback by September.
So the problem there, that scares me a little bit because having been around for the creation of that one page took a long time.
It took a long time.
Many hours of conversation went into it. And so with 15 people having to weigh in, you know, to-
It is a little-
To do it, to have a product by September, I feel like we'd have to do another half day retreat.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. It almost sounds like an offsite to me. Because we probably typically wouldn't be able to get into the depth that we need to within, you know, a normal, you know, business meeting. I'm thinking it really would be an offsite.
I mean, we may be able to make some progress with it on March 31st. Well, actually, that's really the core values and school motto and priorities. Right? That's really the goal of the March offsite.
I mean, I think we commit to have it reviewed by then because we could find that it's easier than we think. That it's already well enough, you know, worked, that it doesn't require too much more.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, how about, I don't know, a checkpoint or something? I like the idea of having some deliverable in September.
Yeah.
And maybe we can work, we can pull it back to governance to ask for an exact what that, what that September piece would look like.
Add a September deliverable. And it could be, you know, largely ready.
Yeah, if we're done, if we're done, great.
Right, right. Maybe it'd be done.
But I think, I think that this has been a challenging topic and I think that we, it would be amazing if we were done in September.
Yeah, I would find it hard.
Other comments on mission and values area? Finally, so our next, next one is moving toward competitive salaries. We split this up into, I mean, really, the purpose of this was to focus toward the meeting to long range. And we cut it into two pieces. And basically, first to define the targets and the second one is to say how we're going to get there.
Process mechanics ran out of steam.
Okay, so, well, no, we, so for process mechanics, we realized there's a lot of different ideas around, the process mechanics also reflects how we, part of it's how we make decisions, what process we use to make decisions, which has many different meanings to many different people. And, yeah, well, basically, we ran out of steam at that point and thought that it was a better discussion. Overall, we thought eventually this would be a better discussion for the board. What we'd like to do at this point would be for each of you to think about meetings that you've attended, what was the best process mechanics? What does process mechanics or decision-making mechanics mean to you? What best practices have you observed in your daily lives? And we can try to roll that back together and come up with some goal, taking that feedback come back with some goals for process mechanics. But we think that this would likely be a future board, board-level discussion and then goals coming out of that.
So I will put it on the agenda for March. So everyone, hopefully, we can put it on, we should be able to fit it in a discussion then.
For the full-day meeting or just the regular board meeting?
The regular board meeting. So everyone has homework to do that. And do you want people to send thoughts to you, Roger? We talked about it at a governance committee first?
Yeah, if you had, if you had thoughts, ideas, articles that you could either attend the governance meeting or send thoughts to me, we can try to coalesce best practices we heard of to, one of the thoughts that was presented was to start the conversation, seed the conversation with some best practices from the industry and sort of maybe a little bit of history of how we made decisions in the past as a starting point for the discussion. But, you know, the group as a whole said, said, we've got a lot of work to do here. We don't efficiently make decisions. We don't have an efficient process for making decisions.
Record Raul?
No, fortunately, he's not in the room. So we've got to put him in charge or something else.
Yeah, because I think part of what we discussed, maybe he had some ideas because he brought this forward, actually finding session.
Yeah.
It would be helpful and as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Just for the record, Raul, could you repeat what you said about how we do relative to other boards that you've sat on or witnessed?
Well, now I'm on record. Yeah, that's why we're a very well-functioning board. Obviously, always room for improvement and we want to embody the spirit of AMSA, something beyond our own expectations. So, the more we think about it, the better. And I think part of it also comes from, I don't know how long it takes for us to make decisions. And I think that's the root cause of it. That's why I was asking if you can come out on that and if we can actually have this conversation the next quarter.
So, and that, that ends the governance report.
Okay. Any questions for Roger? Okay, then let's do finance and audit committee report.
Okay. One second, let me try and get this up. So just before I start, and I will make this a little bigger or smaller. One, I just wanted to mirror what Pauline said about Tom. And I do think we all, you know, he has owed a great amount of gratitude for what he has done for the school over his, I believe, seven years on the board in total.
Six and a half.
Six and a half. He did spend quite a lot of time with me over the last year. And we, we worked very well together and I appreciate all the help that he, I'm sure, will give me in the future because he has said he is on my speed dial if I need any help. So that's great. Number two, welcome Gene to the finance committee. Glad you're on the finance committee. Okay. So, you have this in front of you in a much smaller version, but I'm going to try-
Quite the eye test.
Yeah, yeah. I'm basically going to focus, I'm going to make this pretty quick. I'm going to focus on the total budget. This here is the comparison of November and December, as well as the comparison of July through December. So that's halfway through the school year. Next month, in March, we'll be reviewing January and February and will be more up-to-date going forward on a monthly basis. The things I want to focus on today, though, are really just the things that are changing in our forecast for the year as compared to our original budget. First and foremost, our tuition. We are re-forecasting that based on, let me move this over a little bit, based on the numbers we've received from DEES, we're expecting our tuition to be up by close to $400,000. And there will be another report that we get, I believe, in March. Is that correct, Pauline?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where we will get the final tuition for the year. So, the good news is that the tuition is going up by, you know, close to $400,000.
That's great.
In regards to student transportation, this kind of mirrors both the revenue and the expense line item. We did increase our transportation cost by one regional bus. So the transportation revenue is going up as well as the expense. Again, they kind of-
Should be washed.
Net each other out. Right. The other big one, though, is the salaries and the payroll taxes and fringe. That is up by about $220,000 because of, I have the list here, there were some additional new hires that were not originally planned in the budget. There were some eliminated positions which would decrease salaries. There were some promotions. And there were some replacements that actually cost more than what we had in our original budget. So, all in all, the salary line item is up by $220,000. And then with that, the taxes and fringe is up as well. If you go down to the bottom line, we started out the year with a budget expecting pretty much to break even with a surplus of $17,000. We are now expecting a surplus closer to $166,000 based on where we thought we would be. So that's an increase of about $149,000. All the other items up there where the percentages are either higher or lower to date, it's really a timing issue. But we don't expect those numbers to come in too far off from what we had originally in our plan. Does anyone have any questions? Not this month? So next month, we'll be reviewing January and February. And then we'll be back in line to be reporting on a monthly basis. That is my entire update.
Is the budget happening in March or are we going to do my budget in April?
We're actually starting that process right now. Liana is pulling together a bunch of information and we are going to start looking at that, I believe, at the beginning of March.
Okay. All right, great. Questions for Lucy?
Overall, are the increases in salaries, are those positions more on the administrative side or is it a mix?
I-
It's a lot of special ed, actually.
I think, yeah, I believe it was a lot of special ed. I don't have the breakdown in front of me by person.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, Ms. Lindsay does.
The new literacy specialist, I imagine, had already been approved. But that's, she has PhD in literacy. That was one big add-on. And at the time, the budget was approved.
Right.
And we weren't going to have that many students in the reading. It was also ELL director, there was also the ELL consultant we had to hire.
A lot of ELL.
Yeah, yeah.
Special education literacy.
Yeah. Good to know.
Okay. If there are no questions, then let's move on to a development committee report. Thank you, Lucy.
Great. Development committee met on February 12th, Abraham Lincoln's birthday, I believe.
That's correct.
They didn't make a big deal of it anymore, did they?
It was my son's birthday, too, but-
Yeah, they used to make a much bigger deal out of Abraham Lincoln's birthday.
Because they put it all into President's Day.
Yeah, but it used to be, combined them all, yes.
So the committee met with Dr. Lewis and Mr. Vital, which was great. And so, Mark has been in the job now for three months, a little less.
About that, yeah.
So, the staff report was amazing. So he's hit the ground running. In addition to the, in corporate outreach, he has reached out to 10 local corporations in addition to the ones that Dr. Juret showed us today. And he's been using potential internships as the first point of conversation, but he's really trying to field them out for all the ways to help us. Alumni relations, plans are made for the five-year reunion for the beta class. It's going to happen in April at Tower Hill. He has recruited a chair for the Charlie class reunion in 2019. He is making plans for alumni barbecue to take place in May. And his goal is to have two annual events plus class reunions, kind of as the core events program of alumni engagement. So, glad to take credit for all of his work. He's also really, you know, hit the ground running very enthusiastically regarding the annual giving campaign, where he is bringing more to it in terms- where he is bringing more to it in terms of his time in addition to, you know, the communication staff at the school. We're working on like a structure of there are going to be chairs to the campaign, probably a parent and a board member. We're, you know, still working all that out. It can take place April to June. The goals that he's recommended are, we're budgeted for $40,000. We recommended a public goal of 50. And a stretch goal, he'd like to see if we can do 60. So that's been, that's great news from the staff, on the staff side. On the committee side, what we're looking at is, again, you know, how are we going to generate enough revenue from everything to afford more competitive salaries? And so this year, we're looking at, first, studying how it's done right. And AMSA does actually have a pretty rich history of development activities, but most of it back in the early years. So we want to look at that. We want to bring in a series of expert witnesses so that we can then make a plan with targets and look at things like hiring consultants and things like that. Because we have hired consultants in the past. Consultants are not always a happy experience. There are a lot of them out there, there are a lot of good ones, there are a lot of them that are not so good. And so we want to, you know, devote that time to educating the committee and I think the board as well. So that's kind of the headlines of the committee members. And Roger keeps coming to meetings. Are you joining the committee or not?
Certainly, it depends, depends on how facilities and other things go. It's on my, on my priority list to help development. If I will continue to contribute as much as I can.
So we appreciate his membership pro temp.
Yeah. Okay. With that, do we have any other items in open session? Do anyone have anything else? No? Okay, in that case, I will take a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of discussing, discussing litigation strategies to consider the purchase and lease of real property and strategies for collective bargaining because doing so in open session will be detrimental to our position.
So we'll.
Okay, Liz?
Second.
And for a second, we do have to take roll call votes to go into executive session. So Jean?
Yes.
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 Okay, and we are inviting Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsey and Lisa O'Connor into executive session with us.